Board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, November 18th, 2015 at 7:02 PM. And can we have members present?
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Manufo Liainga Anawai.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Alright, so we have students here from Holy Angels to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, right?
Can I stand? Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just going to the meeting guidelines? At this time, the board members will review our meeting guidelines. You have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have a special presentation tonight from the Daily City Host Lions Club, 2015 Peace Poster Contest winners. The Daily City Host Lions Club will present this year's poster contest award winners. Students from Benjamin Franklin, Fernando Rivera, Franklin D. Roosevelt, Holy Angels, Our Lady of Mercy, Our Lady of Perpetual Help, and Thomas R. Policy the schools entered the contest.
I'd like to invite the representatives from Daily City Host Lions Club to come forward.
We just want to thank everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, especially the students. They did a wonderful job on all their artwork today, or past four weeks. So today, we have the first, second, and third place winners of our contest. We do this every year, it's an annual contest. Sorry, it's first time. So it's an annual contest that we hold every year, and we always have great, great, great response from the students and wonderful pictures. This year's theme was to share peace, and they did a wonderful job representing that.
Good evening. It is our pleasure to award the first, second, and third winners to the Holy Angels School, which was sponsored by Gustavo and Teresa Pirano family. There were 11 entries. The first entry winner is Mia Futra. Second is Jeannie. And the third is Brenda Gonzalez.
Please come up, please come up, the three winners, please.
There were 11 entries from this school.
First place is for Mia Furtay. Congratulations, Mia.
Okay. We have one and two, is there another one? It's okay. One second. So you're Jeannie? Here you go, Jeannie. And if you'd like to hold on to yours.
Congratulations to you.
Wait, wait, let's do this. One. Don't lose it, don't lose it. Here you go, here you go. There you go. And why don't you just go over? Yes, thank you. Thank you. Alright. Wait, oh, everybody turn this way. He just doesn't have his vest on.
Thank you.
The second one is Benjamin Franklin.
One second, one second.
The second one is Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School, was sponsored by the San Mateo Credit Union. There was 45 entries. The first one is Madeline Sevella. The second is Giselle Vasquez, and the third is John Pelino.
And you are? Giselle? Congratulations. And is John here?
He did not, I don't see him.
That's okay. Why don't we?
Okay.
Everybody? My whole list for her. Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is school rep for Benjamin Franklin. Oh, you'll do that first? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
The next one is Fernando Rivera Intermediate School, sponsored by Republic Services. There was 134 entries. The first place is Veronica Alvarado. Second is Christine Chan. And the third is Janice Wong.
And your name? Christina? I was gonna be you, but it wasn't. Why don't you come this way? Now you're making sure those are good, right? Because you can't do this over. Fernando Rivera, representative? We'd like to thank the school principal for being here. Thank you so much. What is your name?
Dina Conti.
Dina Conti, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you so much for your participation.
The next one is Our Lady of Mercy School, sponsored by Bradley Rolles. The first is Danekia Vicenti. The second is Armando Velasco. And the third is Leilani Saragoza. There were 18 entries.
Would you like to come over here? And your name? Let's go this side. Very good. No, 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 one second. We're gonna take you on the other side, because you're gonna look like you're just hanging out.
Just hanging out.
She is just hanging. No, I'll hang out. Oh, wait. Come back.
We have a photo session here.
Good job. And representative for Our Lady of Mercy School? Represent Our Lady of Mercy School? Okay, we'll deliver it to the school.
The next school is Our Lady of Perpetual Help School by Dugan Sierra Mortuary. The first is Giuliano Cassino Cassio. The second is Jessica Ferrer. And the third is Vernelli Guzman.
There we go.
There were 12 entries.
Right here? That's right, I should've remembered that. Jessica? Awesome. Would you like to get in the middle? Right in the middle. There we go.
And the representative for Our Lady of Perpetual Help School here today?
Sure, you want to leave it off in the office?
The next one is Thomas Polisita Middle School, sponsored by MB Financial Resource Center, and there were 29 entries. The first place is Charlize Kalea. Second place is Angelique Divicalis. And the third is Jessica Perez.
Congratulations. Are you Jessica? Congratulations. Oh, that way. Parents first. Congratulations.
And is there a representative for Thomas Polisita Middle School here, come on?
Yeah. And you are? Well, we have the vice principal, we're in handy. Come on, come on over, stand right here. Yeah, let's take a picture. Sure, we do, we're gonna send it. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
And the last one is Franklin D. Roosevelt Elementary School, sponsored by the Daily City Host Lions, and they had 28 entries. The first place goes to Jada Aguilar. Second is Stephanie Castro. And the third is Vicky Fang.
There you go, Vicky, thank you for coming. And you are? Awesome. Okay, let's do it this way. Why don't Stephanie come on this side? You go in the middle. That way? Wonderful.
Representative for Franklin D. Roosevelt School?
And you are? Come on over. Wait, 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 we gotta say to these people now. So the person that was cheering so much is the principal. Any other ones? Oh, there's one in the center. I would just like to say on behalf of our president and our chair, and I think I'm on the committee, I'm the co-chair, I think. We'd like to say thank you so much for taking the time to allow us to do this. The artwork, we passed it out, you saw some of it. The photos, the artwork are absolutely beautiful, don't you agree?
Yes.
So we'd like to turn around.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, if anyone wants a box, not today. Anyone who wants, if they want their box, I'm just gonna leave it over here, okay?
Well, we'd like to thank the Daily City Host Lions Club once again for sponsoring this peace poster contest, and if any of my colleagues want to say anything, this is your chance.
Well, I just want to say, I looked at the pictures and they were absolutely outstanding. They're great artists and keep up the good work, and you're gonna go places with your artwork. It was amazing what was there, beautiful. And I want to thank the Lions Club as well for doing this every year. It's really special, and it means a lot to the children, to the parents, and to all of us here. So thank you so much for all your efforts.
I also, it's wonderful, we get to see, you know, and unfortunately not all of you do, some of the pictures of some of the artwork, which is phenomenal. And I was just feeling tonight like that message about peace is so important right now, and it does me good to see that we've got a lot of children at least who understand peace.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues on the board, and I think the theme of the contest is definitely fitting considering all that's happening around the world at this time. I'd like to know how we can continue to see these pictures outside of these. I don't know if they're available anywhere, but they're just absolutely amazing. They should be displayed. Absolutely amazing. I'd love to continue to support the arts in our schools and in our students in Daly City, but if you could let us know, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. We'll bring it up in our next meeting, and you know, there's always possibilities. I didn't want to say something they can't do, but maybe we can ask City Hall or something.
That would be wonderful.
The Arts Commission.
Yeah, I'm on the Arts Commission, and we just have a photo exhibit upstairs, so if the pictures are available, I'm sure we could find a home for it here, yeah. Thank you.
Can I tone in on what she said?
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
I just want to add something to what folks just said about the pictures. We were looking at it, and we thought to ourselves, wouldn't those be beautiful either holiday cards or postcards? That they're that good? So maybe we can think of what can happen, could be a fundraiser for your schools or something, but let's do something with the artwork. It's too beautiful to put away.
Thank you, and congratulations again to all of them.
And perhaps an extra thanks to our two girls who were brave enough to come and lead us in the pledge without any warning. We appreciate that.
Item B, employee retirement resignation resolutions. The board will recognize long-term district employees with a resolution for their years of service.
Yeah, I'd like to say something a little bit about this. So every year, employees retire or resign, and when it happens at the end of the year, there's an opportunity to do this at a party or at Employee Recognition Day. But we had quite a few happen at the end of last year and over the summer, so we wanted to take the opportunity for the board to recognize them publicly, and I believe we have one person here today that is gonna get a resolution. So I'll give this to Mr. Ali.
This time, we'd like to call for Mr. David Pettenari.
Good evening.
So Mr. Pettenari, I have here a resolution that was prepared and signed by the board in honor of your years of service to our school district.
Thank you very much.
And we thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I just want everybody to know that it was a pleasure working for the district. I miss it terribly. Every morning when I get up, I make a wrong turn, so... But thank you very much for everything. I really do appreciate it.
You're retired, you're not supposed to have to get up. I thought that was the point.
It's hard to sleep when you're used to getting up, right? Well, I want to say thank you for all the years that you put in with our district and for all the things you did with the children. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
The other resolutions, we will mail to their homes and make sure that they get it before the holidays.
And I want to say thank you, Bernie, for bringing that to our attention and letting us do it, because I think it means a lot to the employees that get it, no matter what time they leave. Thank you.
I think that's a first I heard of. Not to allow them to sneak away.
Item seven, actually Section 7 Communications. Item A, persons wishing to adjust the board?
I think now that the doors are open, you may want to speak into the microphones, because otherwise it's not getting picked up by the cameras.
This portion of the agenda is available for individuals to comment on or address the board on any issue that is under the board's jurisdiction and not on the agenda. The board may not discuss or comment on any items in this section. The maximum time allowed for any speaker is usually three minutes. We have one speaker request from Melinda Dart, AFT.
Hi, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. And I did want to congratulate the peace poster winners, because certainly we do need more peace in the world right now. So good job to them, and I wanted to congratulate our employee Dave Pettenari for his many years of service. I also wanted to say regarding the recent election that indeed we did turn away some voters at schools on those days, because there were people who expected to vote at the places where they always voted. And I was afraid of that happening, and indeed, there was some of that happening. I'm sure with time, that will improve, but it will be confusing, because we will once again vote at schools next fall, and then we will go back to vote by mail after that. So it could be a while before everyone gets that message. Hopefully, we can all help spread the message about that. And voter turnout was not what I would call stellar, so I think we're all gonna really have to work on that in our community to improve voter turnout. I also wanted to say that I attended a San Mateo City Council meeting Monday night, where they resolved to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour in the future in the city of San Mateo. And also to look at a resolution regarding prevailing wage, and also to look at future possibilities of implementing a living wage in the future. Those are all different things, but at least $15 an hour would really help people in that community. And we hope that with their bold leadership in this, that in our city, something like that can happen in Daly City, because it would really help out the families in our district, and I'm sure everyone agrees with that. I also wanted to say that we had a community school meeting on Monday, and that we are planning an event related to informing the community about the possibility of community schools in our district and in the high school district. And this event will be held on February 25th, and we know the time. It will be from 4:00 to 6:00, but we don't know where yet, but we'll keep you posted. And on November 12th, at Fernando Rivera, we held a transition to high school evening, which many of, some of you were at, in partnership with PTA, AFT, and the district. And it was very well attended, and we had 95 parents at that event, so...
Great.
It was great to see that kind of interest and turnout. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dart. Administrator comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that the enthusiasm that the Lions Club came tonight, the enthusiasm with which the Lions Club, particularly the one lady came tonight, is absolutely wonderful. And I'd like to thank the Lions Club and the sponsors and our district and community for fostering and instilling nonviolence, peace, and conflict resolution in our students, because we live in a world where this has to be learned. It doesn't necessarily come by nature, it has to be learned.
Well, I also went to the high school transition family night the other night. It was great to see, it was a big showing, especially this early in the year. The high schools are gonna be having their orientations and stuff, and I guess you really can't do enough outreach. This year, they're also having a new registration process that's all online, so it's really important that we get the word out and continue messaging that. But it was a great collaboration too, between the district, the PTA, the school, AFT. It's always good to see that. And secondly, we're wrapping up boys volleyball. The first season is behind us now, except for our championship game. Fernando Rivera undefeated so far, and the challenger Benjamin... Challenger, but still in the championship Benjamin Franklin. So that game will be tomorrow. Be there, be square Fernando Rivera at 3:30, correct? Maybe you need some crowd control, Mr. Hagan. Girls volleyball will begin after the new year on the 12th of January, and that season will run through. And our final events for the year will be the track and field competitions in April on the 8th and the 29th at Westmore. So it's really rolling well. I really appreciate all the teachers and folks that are managing this.
So I also attended the family night transition, and one thing I was just going to point out, and I'm not gonna repeat what everyone said, but that we're trying to improve family engagement, and we had over 90, I counted, over 90 families attend that night. And so I also attended an event on November 7th. It was the by-county, it was through San Mateo County and San Clara County, and it was for early learning family engagement. It was a summit, and with all these ideas, and to bring in families and to engage them. And so a lot of those ideas I'll be bringing with our LCAP process. And so family engagement is, you know, kind of a big part of our LCAP that, you know, is something that we really want to pay more attention to. So I did attend that, and then just to let everyone know, remind everyone, there is no school next week. It is for a break for Thanksgiving, so the whole week is no school.
Board member acknowledgements and commendations.
I don't really have acknowledgement and commendations, although I've noticed there is a lot going on at the schools right now at this time of year, so check your school calendars and attend everything you can. I wanted to comment that in continuing with the thing about the transition to high school, that tonight is the open house at Westmore. Tomorrow night is the open house at Oceana, and I'm not sure what the dates are or were for the other high schools. But this is the time, if your child is moving on from 8th grade out of our district to the high school district, to figure out which school, you have to make a choice. And the high school kids do have school next week.
Yeah, last Thursday, we had, Daly City's Arts and Culture Commission celebrated our first annual photo contest reception, and I have to say, the highlight of the evening was the music team from Woodrow Wilson.
They were great.
Flew everyone away. The city council was like, I didn't even know we had them here. And I said, shame on you, you know, that you didn't know that this was in our schools here. But it also was wonderful to be able to have the conversation with Seth Mauser, who is directing the music team, and the need to expand... who is directing the music team and the need to expand his efforts in really making sure that music team stays here in our district and continues to expand. So, he and I have been talking about how we can peddle the program and maybe find some generous donors to ensure that that happens. I believe in the arts and I believe that this is such a huge part of our children's learning process. And to hear about the sports and athletic programs that are ongoing now and continuing, it's just a huge part of their learning. And I really hope that we can figure out how to support those efforts. I want to thank Principal Brian Allen for facilitating this. Thank you so much. I was so proud because they were, people were just in awe that these were our students. And their grade level. And the level that they were able to play was amazing. No one wanted them to stop. You know, they were acknowledged more than the actual winners that evening. They got to come up here, take pictures with the mayor, and they left that night. Their families left that evening just very appreciative. But they didn't know that they left us with a gift, everyone that was in attendance that night. So, I'm very, very grateful. I attended a few meetings this week and over the weekend and had a lot of conversations with different people, talking about the efforts that are happening at JFK with the four-H program and how Mei Wu, and she commended, she was like, you guys have a great superintendent. And I said, yes, we do. We absolutely do, yes. And she said, you know, he's so wonderful and we're just trying to knock on his door and make sure that we get this in every school there. And I said, well, that's a great conversation because I think that's a shared conversation because we just saw a lot of the great things happening at JFK with the Urban Garden Project. And so, it was wonderful to hear that because everyone else in the room was from Central and South County. And that was what they were highlighting that was happening in North County and it was here in our district. So, I was cheering from my seat and everyone was like, that lady's crazy. And I was just like, we never get any North County love. But outside of it just being North County, it was very specific to this district. So, I was very, very proud to hear about that. Second Food Harvest had also talked about wanting to expand their efforts. My nine-to-five job works with our health population and Head Start, but they talked about their school pantry program and how they'd like to see that happen here. That's a whole nother conversation, but I think it's so important when we talk about food because generally, kids and families don't discuss that and the need for them to get that assistance. So, there's a lot of information about the hot meal sites that is on the Second Food Harvest program, Second Harvest, Second Harvest Food Bank's programs. And a lot of people aren't aware of it, but I think it'd be wonderful if our schools could tag team in those efforts and raise that awareness because a lot of times, that's the last thing we hear about. Our families coming to tell us that they're hungry, you know. And sometimes it takes us to really recognize those signs of our children coming to school hungry. And we can recognize them when we pay attention. So, I hope that we can tap into those resources. America's Tooth Fairy also did a presentation and it was wonderful. And these are all free programs, so I love free. I didn't go to the paid ones. I stayed with the free section. So, I was like, how can you bring it to us? So, I said, you know what? Reach out to our superintendent. Reach out and let him know what you're doing because we love free and we love for our children to be able to access. It's all about access, 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 access. So, it was wonderful because they do educational programs, but they also do dental basic exams in the classrooms. You know, so I wasn't sure what we do at that level, but I've seen them in action. And to alleviate that hurdle of getting our kids in to get dental exams and bringing it to the schools to assist our families with that convenience is just, to me, monumental. Being in social services for over twenty years, I know the importance of getting the services to our families. So, I have a few people who will be knocking on your door. Sorry, Bernie. It's all for the children. All for the children. So, just very thankful, very, very thankful to be able to hear of these services. And I look forward to having people come and ensure that we can have it here in our district. So, thank you.
You know, and if I might, because you made me remember something. Speaking of the Second Harvest Food Bank, the libraries in Daly City and throughout most of the county are doing the Food for Fines program again, in which you can bring any amount of food for the Second Harvest Food Bank, even one can, and any amount of late fees, not lost book fees, but late fines will be waived. So, that's a win-win. Bring the books back, clear your record, get a little bit of food for the hungry in our county, and we have everybody happy.
Thank you for sharing that. And it just reminds me of what we're talking about when we say community schools, of getting everything there at the school. And I know that when we were in grammar school, they had that available in, not all the schools in San Francisco, but some of them. And my husband, coming from a foreign country, not speaking much English, was a recipient of getting his teeth taken care of at the school level. And I'm not sure he loved it at the time, but I think he was happy when he got older. But it is important that we reach out because a lot of the families are not getting the care they need until it becomes an emergency. And we want to be able to give them the services they need. So, they're going to be healthy. If they're healthy, they're going to do better in school. So, I echo everything you say and thank you for bringing it to us. And we can go out and find, there will be people that we can tap into because they're out there wanting to help. It's just no one's knocking on their door. So, if they knock on Bernie's door, that's even better. That's even better. So, I attended a few things. I know I went to the Peninsula Partnership and also attended, and I have to compliment and the rest of the art skill, that they did a fantastic job for their very first project. They did, it was wonderful. And there was a History, Arts, and Science Commission many years ago, way back in the, I think it was the seventies or eighties. And they had big vision of doing something big. And unfortunately, the grant they had fizzled out and nobody really picked it up after that. So, I think with this group now, you guys are going to get it done. I know you will. Everybody's enthusiastic and they're raring to go and it's a great team. So, thank you for your extra service over there. It's needed. And I also am a great supporter of the arts, always have been. My husband, actually, in high school, when you could major in almost anything you wanted to, majored in music. Didn't mean he lived his life, the rest of his life, having a job in music, but he fulfilled the desire at the time and that's what's important. And think when we give kids music, dance, sports, or anything else that we give them, that's part of the school climate, they're going to do better in all their grades. And so, hopefully, we're going to get back to that. And maybe one day we'll fill up the, if the Cow Palace is still around, we can fill up the Cow Palace. Because back when, when Daly City became the seventy-fifth year, their anniversary, the whole place, I don't know, anybody was, it's here now, it was there. I'll be Bob, Ricky was around, no. But everything was in that auditorium. Vocal, dance, instruments, everything from all the schools. And it was a wonderful performance and it was free. And it was packed. Maybe we can do that. Other than that, no more.
All right, thanks. Any correspondence?
I do have one piece of correspondence and a couple of comments. So, first of all, I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Clayton Koo on being elected to our school board. We've been busy orienting him and processing him so he can be ready to join. Join us here in our meeting in December. And I commented to him and how pleased I was in that, you know, the election was run well and it was peaceful and it was very, from my perspective, was a very professional race between the candidates. And so, I was happy for that. I have one piece of correspondence and, and board members, you may have received this if you live within the zone that is being targeted. But there is an invasive pest that has been discovered in the boundaries of Daly City. It's a citrus pest that goes on lemon trees and orange trees and lime trees. Very important that it gets under control. We have lots of pests, but anyway, this one affects agriculture. And, you know, for California especially, with the citrus as being one of the biggest industries, it's important that it gets under control. I believe every address within the zone that is going to be treated has been sent a letter explaining what it is. And I don't know how they're going to find all of the citrus trees, but they do have to be treated. So, encourage your neighbors, your friends, you know, to please let them come in to the backyard and take care of that because if they get a foothold in California, then it could be devastating for that whole industry. Also, with regards to Second Harvest Food Bank, we've had several conversations with them as an organization about ways to reach out to our schools. And one of the ways that we're trying to promote is to partner with our community organizations, primarily our churches and other places of worship where volunteerism and support is a high value. And we have a foothold with Broadmoor Presbyterian Church. They're going to be hoping to, I don't even know if it started, but it's going to be starting soon. They're going to do a partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank and be able to reach out to the families of Ben Franklin, Garden Village, MP Brown, you know, to provide that for them. And I've had conversations with several other community leaders about taking that on because it does require a sizable amount of volunteers to pull off. And if they can provide us with half or a little bit more than half in the organization, then we can probably get parents and other family members who can help with it too. So, that's something we're working on. So, I'm hoping that we can get that at more of our schools. That's it.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item C, general functions, call for nominations for CSBA Delegate Assembly.
So, this, yes, anyway, so this is an annual information piece. If you know someone that you would like to nominate for a delegate assembly, there are an application process description in your packet. Please make sure that you speak to them first and you get their consent. I think there's actually something that they may have to fill out and give you. And then, if you can get that to me, I believe we need to do this by our, is it our meeting by December?
It's due January seventh.
January sixth, yes. So, please get it to me and this, right after we get back from Thanksgiving so that we can make sure to include it in our December board meeting agenda.
Section ten, Business and Financial Procedures, item F, Architectural Engineering Services for Modernization of the District Office. As requested, the administration re- recommends the governing board authorize Deems, Lewis, and McKinley to provide architectural engineering services for the modernization of the district office. The plans will provide a way forward to modernize the existing facility and address the mitigation of hazardous materials present in the facility. The cost for the services is one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. This project will be charged to Fund Twenty-One.
So, this came up from the board when we were discussing the maintenance facility and the project that we're undergoing there, which I believe should be done in the next week. So, if you haven't driven by the maintenance facility on Hill Street, you may want to do that. I hear it looks much better. It should look much better. I will be driving by or stopping by sometime in the next week myself. So, this came up because our district office has also been, the whole building has been bypassed in the past renovation efforts across the district and rightly so. The schools should come first, but it does contain a lot of materials like asbestos and lead in the windows and the flooring that we should be needing to take care of. And this is just the plans being drawn up for how to approach that, that need to be submitted to the Department of State Architects for approval.
Can I ask a question on that, Bernie?
Yes.
If we do that renovation, what will happen to the employees in the building? Would they have to go somewhere else?
We haven't crossed that bridge. The initial idea is that there would be a kind of staging area where, like, for example, the boardroom might be utilized as a place where temporary office space could be set up. We do have the backspace of the building that used to house the church, but we'll be housing the technology department that is being renovated right now. So, that's a very large space that can take part of a department as well. So, we'd be doing it in stages throughout the building, probably three stages, I'm imagining. The backstage, the center stage, and then the front.
Stage right.
So, at least, I mean, I'm not an architect or a planner, but in my head, I'm thinking three. It'll likely be five stages probably and much, twice as long as I think it would take. But we don't think that we'll, we think we could be able to handle it between the spaces that we have there.
Yeah, I did see that that was part of the plan that they're going to be trying to work out is how to work around the fact that it's a twelve-month facility, unlike our schools where they can dive in in the summer. Yeah.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, I didn't mean to ask it. I'm sure they have it in the plan, but I was just thinking to myself, oh, my gosh. Where are they going to go?
We're going to put their desks on the sidewalk.
Any other questions about that?
Yeah, Mr. Young is here. If he has specific questions, he can answer those questions.
Nope.
I just feel like it's long overdue and I'm glad we're getting to that step.
Yeah, so, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Deems, Lewis, and McKinley to provide the architectural and engineering services for the modernization of the district office in the amount listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item G, approval of two thousand and fourteen, fifteen developer fee compliance pursuant to government code sixty-six zero zero one. And could you just give a quick explanation of this?
I will. First off, it's an annual and routine compliance report. And what happens is we collect developer fees from people who are adding on to their homes or building new homes or, and also, so it's residential and commercial as well. And it's a one-time fee and it's collected and shared between our district and the high school district. These funds are then used for like the expanding need because of additional students. And as you know, we sold the Columbus property, so the houses that are being built there are bringing in a lot of developer fees. And so, these fees help us maintain the properties, expand them a little bit for the need for these additional students. So, last year, we collected three hundred and five thousand dollars, which was about three times what we normally collect. And this year, we're collecting as well. And we spent very little, only under twenty thousand dollars on some new furnishing for the students. So, these funds are kept separately and we do report on them every year, how many, how much funds we collect, how much we spend, and what our beginning and end balances are. Additionally, we do increase them when the state allows us to. We do a developer fee study and increase it according to that because our need is actually much greater than the amounts that we're collecting.
How is the money actually collected?
It's collected, the Jefferson High School District collects it for us. And then, they split it off. We have an agreement. They split it off and give us our portion. So, they do the work for us, which is quite nice.
So, what, explain the, all the construction, what is it, everything? Is it all the construction or just homes?
I'm sorry, Sadie.
Is it all construction or is it just homes?
It's commercial construction as well, but the dollar amount for commercial construction is only fifty-four cents per square foot. For residential, it's three dollars and thirty-six cents per square foot. So, we get the majority from residential. And it's like when they do additions to homes.
Yeah, that's why it's important that our neighbors all pull permits for their construction projects because it's part of the permit process is the assessment of the fees. So, and then the new construction, of course, up here at Christopher Columbus and then over, I believe, up at the top of the hill, there's some more developments as well as the ones that are behind MP Brown's school right outside Broadmoor. So, those are all, those all generate developer fees.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen developer fee compliance pursuant to government code six-six zero zero one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another unanimous?
Down to the bottom.
Board member comments and reports and reflection on board meeting guidelines.
I attended Monday night, the County Committee on Redistricting, which had very little business to do regarding redistricting, but we did have a rather interesting presentation on the mental health services available in the county through the county offices, Ed and stuff. And I'm sure that our district office knows about those, but I will forward that, whatever notes I was able to get about that on, just in case there's something that we didn't know about because they really are making a concerted effort to see to it that students are getting the services needed before it's a crisis. And that's, of course, the, the big challenge. Oh, I failed to reflect.
Sorry.
Okay, reflect.
You guys can reflect for me.
I, I chose, um, we will respect differences. We will show respect and never dismiss or devalue others. And, um, I love being different, so it's, it's something I'm thankful for and it, it makes me appreciate diversity even more. And I look forward to celebrating Thanksgiving and the holidays. And I look forward to hearing about everyone celebrating and everything that you all ate during your, um, family festivities. But, um, I think, um, at every meeting I've gone to in the past week, everyone has talked about gratitude and what they're grateful for. And, uh, I, I'm just, I continue to be grateful to be able to sit in this seat with some very incredible people and administrators. And it makes me really emotional because I'm proud to, to open doors for people from my community who are rarely sitting here where I am. And as a Pacific Islander, it means the world to me. It, it really, really does to be able to represent my small community in that way, but more importantly, to represent all parents in this district. It's, it's, as a parent, I will continue to appreciate the ability to serve in this capacity and especially as a parent of a child with special needs. And when she appreciates seeing me and other parents provide that sacrifice of time and volunteerism, which I have seen a decline in, in all four schools that my kids belong to, it's, it makes you appreciate giving back even more. So, my hope is, as we approach Thanksgiving, that we all be mindful of many different ways that we can give back this season because there's so many that are less fortunate than we are. And so, I wish you all a very, very blessed and happy Thanksgiving and I look forward to seeing you guys again soon.
Thank you. Okay, so, do I dare say that you picked the same one as me again? Is that twice now? Anyway, um, and I too appreciate that we do respect differences and that we show respect for one another and that we don't devalue anybody and that everybody's idea, no matter what it is, is important. And while it may not always get the majority vote on it, at least we get the respect of being able to say it. So, it's, it means a lot, it really does. And I think we're sending a message out there to our families, to our students and to our staff that it's okay to have an idea. And it'd be nice to do something perhaps in the future sometime that Daly City was doing, and that was, um, letting employees put forth an idea somehow either for safety or for, um, just how to get things done in a better man, you know, way or something. And, uh, a committee that would look at that over and, and pick one that's the greatest idea they saw. And sometimes it gets implemented and how valued employee would feel if what their idea really made a difference in this district rather than people just tend to maybe complain, "We should do something better." And if, if we could think about that sometime, that's making everybody feel very valuable. So, that's one thing I kind of like to see maybe down the road to happen. As far as, uh, there wasn't too much things of, of things going on, but I did have an experience, so you can all feel sorry for me. I had my wisdom tooth up here pulled out and boy, oh, boy, the roots were longer than I can imagine. It felt like it was this long, but it was only that long. Anyway, um, that's why I'm kind of swollen in a little black and blue and, um, it's getting better, but it, I had to eat on one side of my mouth, but anyway. So, the, uh, I just wonder if anyone knows why we call the back teeth over here wisdom teeth? Because now I'm afraid I lost some of my wisdom. I don't know. Everyone's teasing me about that now, you know? But, um, if anyone knows the, the, how that came about, I'd like to know.
I think it's because they don't come in until you're adult and have presumably acquired some modicum of wisdom.
Well, that, that, that makes a good, that's a good explanation.
The opposite of baby teeth, then you have your wisdom teeth.
Yeah, well, your baby teeth and your permanent teeth and then the wisdom teeth.
Exactly.
But the doctor was a great guy. He was terrific, that oral surgeon. I praise him, I recommend him to anybody. And, and then he did say, gave me a compliment. He said, "Gee, at your age, I can't believe you have all your teeth." I said, "Oh, okay. Don't take out anymore." But anyway, so I had that to deal with, so, anyway. That's it.
Well, I focused on guideline three. We will build upon the ideas of others and look for common ground. We will paraphrase for understanding. And it wasn't hard tonight to find common ground, especially with the peace poster contest and, um, uh, recognizing our employees. And it's great to see our principals out here and our teachers this evening. And yes, that's it. So, tonight, we'll have a moment of silence and, and adjourn in memory of...
Can I get, add one to that?
Rose Anchor, Mother Francine Olrich, Administrative Assistant for English Language Department at John F. Kennedy Elementary School.
Did I add an elementary?
Oh, yes.
And I'd also like to, uh, ask that we end the meeting in memory of one of our firefighters that passed away. And, um, uh, I know that we really respect the fire department very much for all that they do. So, um, let me get, oh, shoot, I left the name wrong.
Next song.
Yeah. Darn it. Okay, it's, let me ask, it's Carl Proiette, P-R-O-I-E-T-T-E. I did write it down over here, so.
Meeting adjourned.
Maria, I wrote it down.